Good morning, everyone. Please stand for the pledge of flag.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First thing on the agenda is old business, the recommendation letter for the fueling station construction.
As a reminder, this is the recommendation compared as for the fueling station that was contemplated as part of the original project. Didn't know whether or not we would have available funds, and it turns out we do. So the agreement is for not to exceed $1,948,532. We had a meeting on this a couple of weeks ago to go through the details with both Faridus and Haggerman. There may be some cost savings with redesigning some of the drainage. Lockmueller and Haggerman are pursuing that. We're going to have to check with the surveyor's office to see if that's appropriate. And that's why it's a not to exceed, so they think that there may be a negative change order in the spring if they can do some drainage redesign. Again, that's $1,948,532, and that is being paid out of the bond.
We did have a meeting, I think on Thursday after the last commissioner meeting, and I'm not sure if it answered questions or raised more questions for me. I have asked for a lot of information, and granted, the last week was a short week due to Thanksgiving. Personally, I would like to see more information before we vote on this $2 million project, want some data to verify that we are going to see the savings, that it's going to pay for the thing, pay for the thing over time. And then, as Bob alluded to, there is potentially some savings on site and maybe elsewhere. I'm not really sure. So I guess that's where I, where I stand on the thing.
What's your thoughts?
No. We did have a meeting. We do believe there's some savings that's possible with the drainage side of this project. We did get some information back from at least one of the oil companies that would be considered a bidder for gas and diesel. And their, their estimate was somewhere between 50 and 55 cents a gallon savings, which is relatively significant. That wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily go up and down with the price of the fuel. It would be, it's more on the transportation side, which would prove out on this project that somewhere around 14 years, just doing those rough calculations without, without significant increases in the amount of fuel that we buy, which I think we probably will be looking at as time goes on. That fuel amount probably will increase. So that's what I would have to say, that we've looked at a lot of this. I mean, Tim, how?
I mean, do we have that in writing, the 50 to 55 cents?
Well, I have it right here.
It was, it was an estimate based off their last year's purchases. It's not, I mean, they're not going to guarantee that at this point in time.
It's, what it, what it was is the, what they took their, their transport load that they bought, and then, once they stored it, and then put it into their, their delivery trucks, what the difference in price was there. And there, it averaged from January 11th, I think was the first load, to basically November 11th. And the average difference between those two was 53 cents a gallon by buying by the transport load instead of delivering it by the truck. And that's, that's happened for years. I mean, years ago, on the farm, we always bought, bought our fuel, our diesel by the transport load because of the savings with that. And, and that was one company that I, I asked us, asked to give us those numbers to, to give me an estimate on what the savings would be per transport load. And if you figure 220, around 220,000 gallons per year on that, then that brings us approximately to $120,000 per year savings. And like, like Jeff said, over 14 years, then that's, that's $1.7 million savings.
The other thing I forgot to mention is during our meeting, they did discuss that the prices that we had that are included in the agreement for the canopy, as well as the tanks, were from June, and they were quite sure that if we didn't lock them in this year, they would go up next year, so increasing the cost.
Well, and maybe I mentioned this last time, one example of that is the company that I talked to said that for a, a 110 pump to put on a tank a year ago, you could buy it for $200, $250. Now it's over $600 for that same pump. So I guess I use that as an example of that nothing's getting cheaper, and the more we put it off, the more it's going to cost. And we've been working on this for 10 years to try to figure out the best time, place, and then the funding to do it. And it hasn't gotten any cheaper in 10 years.
As a reminder, the, the availability of the cash for this is through the bond was based on a bond premium that we received when we sold the bonds. That totaled about $2.7 million. And then, since the issuance of the bonds, we've been earning interest on the money sitting at Bank of New York while it's waiting to be spent on the project. And that interest, so far, has been about 2.7, and we're, we're estimating that by the end of the project, it'll be closer to 3, 3.1 million, that before the project's turned over completely. So that, that estimate is around $5.5 million total cash that was not a part of the original calculations. So, I mean, the, the cash is there, the, we know the prices are going to go up, or at least we're sure that they will. It just makes sense to me to, to move ahead with it. And we had a comment last week that the council asked us to, to put this on hold, and I, I discussed it with three different council members, and they all told me that they didn't remember that being a part of a conversation during the public council meeting. So.
Donnie, is that information you would share with me?
Yep, I'm doing it right now.
Okay.
It took me a minute to pull that up. There's the.
I thought you already had it, Tim. I apologize.
I thought I, I thought I'd sent it to you, so that's my mistake for not doing that. And of course, every time there would be fuel, once we realize that we need to add fuel to the, to the storage, to the tanks if we're low, then there's at least three, three different companies that want to, that will be bidding on that, if not more. So it's not locking it in to one company that's going to bid it every time. It is an open bid. Not making, makes sense to me there on that.
The other thing that is significant is the higher level of record keeping will be able to, to do with the system that'll be put in at the pumps.
And those are 2004 numbers. 2024, sorry. Went a little too far back. I didn't want to go 20 years back. Although, prices 20 years ago would probably be a lot better. Well, therefore, either we, we move to accept what we have in front of us, or the other alternative is delay it to our last meeting of the month, which will be on the 20th, I believe. That's our next meeting.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, sorry.
Well, my preference would be to delay it just to verify some of the information, verify the information you showed me, and then get some of the other information that I've asked for, which I would expect would be forthcoming, just with the short week last week.
Yeah, it was difficult with all of it.
Right.
Yep, understand. All right, well, then I think it's wise for us to delay that till the 16th and take care of it then, and try to get all the rest of the information to you. And I'll, I will forward that to you so you have a copy of it. Welcome to call any of the other companies, whether it's Co-op or anybody else, for the same, same kind of data that they gave us.
Do you know, was Aaron planning on coming in today?
Yes.
Okay, so what time?
10:30.
10:30? So we can meet with Lockmueller at 10:30, if you want to do it that way.
All right, then we'll move on. Legal issues.
I don't believe I have any today.
What a great way to start off the month.
That's right.
All right, next is opening the 2025 annual material bids.
Okay, this is for category one asphalt materials. Milestone contractors received November 26 at 2:11. They have a schedule of prices and quantities. Again, that's milestone contractors, category one asphalt materials. Second is for central paving. Also, category one asphalt materials received November 14 to 10:14. They also have a attachment showing aggregate, asphalt coated aggregate surface 11 from the planter delivery, various prices. This is for category two, stone, gravel, sand, and steel slag materials received from engineering aggregates, November 22 at 2:22 p.m. They schedule stone, rap, gravel, and sand, various quantities. This is for also category two, stone, gravel, sand, and steel slag received from U.S. aggregates, November 27 at 1:14. Also with a appendix or attachment, scheduling various types of stone, gravel, quantities, and prices. This is, next one is also category two, from Whitesville Mill Service Company, received November 19 at 9:53. They also have an appendix, schedule of various prices and quantities. Are they in the category two? Next is category three, which is pipe and culvert materials, received from Corin, Maine, on November 26 at 12:50. They've attached an appendix with various different sizes and quantities of pipe, costs, and quantity. Next one is St. Regis. Sorry. St. Regis, this is also for category three, received on, oh, I'm sorry, November 22 at 11:44 a.m. St. Regis also attached an appendix with various prices, sizes, and quantities of different types of drainage products, pipe and culvert materials. This is also category three. This is also category three, pipe and culvert materials from CivilCon Inc., received November 26 at 10:51 a.m. And they have also attached schedules, various different sizes, pipe and culvert materials, prices, and quantities. I don't think that's in the category three, isn't it? And we've got category four, excuse me, pavement traffic markings. This is Indiana sign and barricade, received November 27 at 11:45 a.m. And they have attached an appendix of various different pavement markings, cost per price and quantity. And next is from Accurate Striping, also category four pavement markings, received November 25 at, whatever, 25th. And they have also attached an appendix schedule of various different types of pavement markings, price, and quantity. And the last category, and those are one bid for it, is asphalt materials, Inc., received November 25 at 11:12. And this is for etuminous liquid emulsion products. And they have also attached an appendix with various different quantities and types. And that's all of them, so I would recommend the motion to take them on advisement for refund the high rate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, next is our ARCA project list amendment.
So on this spreadsheet before you, it also does not include the Comcast request for $10,000? If you want to add that in, I will need to add it as well.
Did you see that email, Tim? They, they're applying for a FEED grant on behalf of Boone County and asking for a $10,000 match. That FEED grant is, as I understand it, they're putting in a grant request for all uncovered areas of the county.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. So $10,000 is a pretty small amount for a task for, for a match. I think it's gotten there, whether it comes from this or it comes from something else.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Also, another change, I'll let you address the road project that you're working on. Another change that I put in a request for, in working with the town of Jamestown, we had approved $400,000 to go to a sidewalk, downtown sidewalk and lighting project that they were working on. Due to some complications with the bidding process, they are not going to be able to be under contract by January 1st, but they are under contract for a sewer improvement project. So the original request was to move the $400,000 from the sidewalk project to their sewer project, but in review of their engineering estimates, the engineering for their sewer project totals $565,000. So I've asked that we use some of the savings that we've gotten, where we had bids come in below the estimates to help with that engineering on that. So I put in a request for $565,000 to go to Jamestown for engineering. And then Tim had some other changes that he proposed.
Yeah, there's, so in talking with John Reiner on the council, there's a need from the Jamestown, Advance, and Thorntown, Sugar Creek fire departments. So we're proposing $30,000 to each of those departments. And then also, the, Jeff alluded to bids coming in below budget. Those are on the regulated drain improvement projects, so that new total will be for $411,644.90, based on bids that came in last Monday, I believe.
Tim, do we need to state what projects those were? There's seven different projects that?
Yeah, there were, so there's some additions there. Cobb ditch cleanout, Dinsmore ditch cleanout, Dixon Magotti ditch cleanout, Hickson ditch cleanout, Sedwick ditch cleanout, shots and windling tile maintenance, and then looking at stormwater ordinance update.
We also had a reduction on the Jackson Run, Lautner, Trail 36, and Terre Haute.
Yeah, Jackson Run goes, new total is $297,486.74. The Lautner Trailside ditch, new total is $376,114.65. And the Terre Haute drainage improvement, $777,000. Those are all reductions. And then. Those are the new totals. And then we're proposing a new item for an IT assessment. I have, I got a name from Whites Town, and that, that amount for that is $50,000. And then also another new item for road conversion materials, which would be the remainder, which is $358,726.16.
That would reduce by $10,000 if you add the Comcast.
Oh, correct. So it'd be $348,726.16.
Tim, what about the hang on that project is its thing?
Well, I think from our standpoint, it is, yes.
I just wanted to verify with you that's what your intention was?
Yes.
Okay, so that takes in all the changes.
I think that's it. All right, Kaylee? I would make the motion that we adopt this new list.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Yes, sir.
That's Lewis, 1020 Berry Drive, London, Indiana. I've been working with Jamestown here and there, doing some consulting work, and that money that goes to the fire station actually should go to the city because the city owns the, they own everything. The only thing volunteers do have are the volunteers. The city owns the rest of it, so that money needs to go to the town of Jamestown.
That's a good point. Same way with Thorntown and Sugar Creek, but Advance is different. It's a, it's owned by the firemen, so that, we'll make sure it all goes the right direction. Excuse me. All right, let's see. Next on our list, Comcast letter of support.
Well, since we just put the money aside for it, I would make a motion that we write the letter of support for Comcast.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
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 All right, now the agreement with Zionsville.
Yes, this is accounted for in the ARPA list. This is, is an agreement with Zionsville to help fund the improvements to the Inglewood subdivision in the amount of $25,000. And the town of Zionsville is also contributing an amount. I'm not sure how much they are, maybe Tim knows. And then the rest is going to be paid for by the homeowners association. But John Overlander and I have worked through this agreement, and I recommend your approval and adoption.
Yeah, Zionsville's currently is proposed to cover 50% of the cost, so this $25,000 would be in addition to that. So I will make the motion to, to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, next on the list is the county attorney, fee proposal for 2025.
This is the same as the proposal that I've made for the past however many years. I have to answer any questions.
I guess the only comment I would make is, you know, I've been pretty consistent that when Scott Powell's going to take office in January, and to the extent that he can, I think it makes sense to have him vote on these type of things. So I don't know if it makes sense to just continue under your current proposal until that vote takes place, or I guess that's my only, that's probably my only comment.
All right, that's what we need to consider then, if we want to delay this until January or take care of it now. In the past, we've always just, you've been here for two years, so you have a little bit of past, but we've always taken care of it at the end of the year to move into the next. So it can happen either way. What's your thoughts, Jeff?
It's the fee proposal, it hasn't changed for years. Changes can still be made, Tim, after the first of the year. Just makes sense to have it in place on January 1st, to me, but I'll do, you know.
I mean, I guess if changes can be made, you know, if Scott, that was my only concern was him having a voice in who his legal counsel is, that's really it, so I guess if it doesn't matter either way.
It doesn't limit you from making a change, is all I'm getting at. It's just a fee structure. I'll make a motion that we approve it, you guys can decide if you want to second or not.
You thought on that?
I mean, I guess I look at it from the other standpoint, if it doesn't make any difference, what's the, why, why don't we just wait until Scott's in office?
I can see both sides there. Like I said, things can be changed after first of the year, but I tend to go back on how we've handled things in the past and straightforward, so I'll be the one to second the motion then. And then if there is changes that need to be made, that can happen after January 1st. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Very good. All right, Web Services, Web Services Support and Management Agreement with Commissioners slash Guts.
This is, yeah, this is the, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were coming up front.
Oh, no, I have to, you're welcome to. It's the annual, it's the current contract for the website, for the county and the sheriff's offices expires at the end of this year, and this is the renewal. We've worked in the contract to where we will do an actual facelift, if you will, of the sites, starting in '26, and that's included in the cost of the project. And this is the, both the maintenance of the site as well as the posting of the site. And so we make three or four changes every day to the website, so it's a very active site, the site has about 700 pages on it between the two sites, so it's pretty big.
A facelift to the site in 2026?
Yes.
Or can we move that up a year?
Well, the main reason we were thinking about doing it in '26 is the solution that we use is coming out with a brand-new platform, and it's going to change how everything is currently structured, and that's going to happen in '25. So our intention is to start it in '25, but it's going to take some time, obviously, to, you know, fully migrate all that data and whatnot, so.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Parr, you're next on the list.
Nick Parr, Boone County Highway. The first item on the agenda for considerations, rejuvenate check agreement for the rejuvenator project, they were the only bidder for that project, anticipate making some changes to our specifications in the future to get more competitive bids. They have been the regular provider of that service, that it's a surface treatment to asphalt, there are other products that have been kind of in the works and are available, but we haven't seen the history and the evidence that they would work, but we want to try those in the future, maybe do any of the material bids, try to be a smaller section of them, so we don't have to commit to a large project. The total for this rejuvenator project is $818,271.40, $526,912, that is for the roads in our inventory, but we partnered with Zionsville and Whitestown for them to include roads also on this project, and they will be responsible to cover the cost for their roads. Zionsville's roads are $150,001.0360, and Whitestown's is $141,256.80. We've already had an MOU executed, so we would be able to have them pay the cost for all the expenses. We have significant savings by adding them to our project, up the amount of square yards that are going to be covered, about 20 to 25 cents per square yards savings, and our part of the project's 477,000 square yards. So significant savings with us working with the two towns to this project as we want it in.
Any questions?
I'm moving to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The next one is for the resurfacing project, Bum Gardner Asphalt was the low bidder. We had several bids for the resurfacing project, their bid was $2,871,953.20. This is work to be completed in 2025, has been budgeted for 2025, included several roads, but the major road was a full-depth rectification on County Route 500 East from 32 to 300 South. That is also a community crossings road that we've been awarded funding, just a few weeks ago, we were awarded the funding for that, as well as the three other roads that we submitted for community crossings, so this includes those roads as well as the other roads we're going to plan to resurface next year.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And the next agreement is for Free Hill Asphalt, Inc., their bid was $102,334. They met all requirements similar to the other two contractors, these bids were open at the last meeting, we had three or four bidders, this was lower than expected, we have worked with this company previously doing our crackfield projects, recommend approval of the execution, recommend the execution of that agreement for $102,334.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The next item that's on the agenda is also mine, is for out-of-state travel requests. I was invited to the forum on rural, safer rural roads, put on by the National Center for Rural Road Safety, which is a federal highway center for excellence. I discussed this previously with you guys, when I got invited to find out if I would be able to attend, I didn't know all of the details on how it was going to get paid for, but since then, I've been able to gather information from Federal Highway, they're covering all the cost of the travel and the lodging, and we'd be responsible for the cost, if there's any cost for food or any other expenses that would incur as part of this travel. Was unaware or forgot that I needed to ask for formal approval, but had a lot of work to do to figure out if it was even going to work to be able to attend this conference. It is in Bozeman, Montana, the purpose is to discuss and to grow new patterns of thought and behavior, explore what a safe system approach looks like on the rural roads, and create actionable and implementable strategies and goals to share with all rural road practitioners and stakeholders. I'm not 100% certain why they invited me, I've been to several road safety events around Indiana, put on by LTAP, and presented at Road School on some of the things that we do for local road safety and our local road safety plan, and Federal Highway has reached out to various individuals, and there's about 30 people they invited to attend from around the country to come to this event, so just requesting the out-of-state travel to be able to attend this.
When is that?
It's coming up very soon, so should have asked for this approval at the last meeting, but wasn't sure everything was going to work out and be able to attend, so it'll be coming up this month, and we'll be leaving very soon to attend if I'm approved to attend.
But I'm just wondering, what time of year, whether it's winter or summer?
It's going to be cold, yes, so.
Cold and snowy.
It's this month, so it is going to be cold, and it's actually, right now, it's warmer there than it is here, it's in the 40s in Montana, depending on where you are, of course, but currently in Bozeman, Montana, it's in the 40s, and here it's in the teens, so cold, I guess, is more concerned as the snow mounts and the potential travel issues that could cause.
Any questions?
Well, I'd just say, Nick, I think it's pretty clear to most of us why you were selected to be a part of this panel, so I think it's a testament to the hard work that you put in every day.
Thank you.
All right.
Good, approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Question, are you approving with a per diem, or do you want receipts after he returns? Per diem will be paid before, receipts are after, and you're only allowed a certain
So is the per diem amount greater than the amount you're allowed, or is it the same amount?
Does that depend on where you're going to eat?
I don't have a lot of choices, so they, they send emails and say you've got to go to these locations.
You have one choice only.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you really, do you want to take out of the pocket and then get reimbursed, do you want them to approve the per diem before you show up?
Okay, no, so I haven't looked into that at all.
Whatever's easiest.
Yeah, I don't know what's easier and what we're doing.
But depending on when you leave, also might.
I would think.
Why don't you just go with receipts?
I would go with receipts.
Yeah.
And be reimbursed, if that's...
Okay.
I think that's the wise way to do it, Tom.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Do you want to continue on with the rest of yours while you're there?
Certainly can. Other items I have for consideration, there's a quote for pipe materials, 12 and 30-inch pipes, various lengths that were included in the 2024 annuaterial bids, we install those with our own crews throughout the year, this is just to restock the pipes that we keep. Total amount of the quote is $28,138.52, this is off of annuaterial bids, but we, they require a executed quote before they'll do the delivery, and then they'll reimburse us after the fact. So the quotas were for CivilCon, they had the materials and the price and availability to provide what we're looking for.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The next item is Task Order 48 for Butler, Freeman, and Seifert, is an existing task order that originally was $6,000 for inspection of construction of Spectrum Fiber Belt CR56E. That was when we initially were provided that project, they have substantially changed it to, instead of being overhead construction, it now be buried construction, which takes a lot more inspection and work and oversight. This is a task order that's getting reimbursed by the company doing the work, this total amount of this agreement is now $13,000, it's hourly, not to exceed, and it's reimbursed.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Other item for, just for information, Bridge 100 closes today on 450 North between 275 West and 350 West, it's going to be closed for about three weeks, so it's just on the north side of the Trophy Club Golf Course, it does dead end at the interstate, so the route around would be 275 West and 47, for anybody that needs to take that route. Bigger impact of traffic, closure is Bridge 91 on Lyseville Road, just west of 225 East, it's also going to be closed for three weeks, so it's a heavily traveled road, the only detour routes are gravel roads that are in the vicinity, but as for bridge repairs, these are items that were found during our bridge inspection, and we were able to get a contractor available to get those taken care of pretty quickly because the significant issues with scowl are underneath them, so they will be closing today if they're not already closed, and they will be closed for three weeks for those repairs. Those are my own two items.
That's it?
That's it.
Very good, thank you. We don't have anything from Area Plan? Is Max here, does Max have anything off your Health Department? Human Resources? And IT, nothing else? Okay, elected officials, anyone? All right, we move on to document sign and claims.
Got one claim to ratify. It's the jail project, it's for relocation strategies and home and transfer and storage, this is for furniture moving, $25,416.50.
Move to ratify.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Claims.
Claims.
Move to approve, claims.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Mail, anything?
No, note.
No mail. One more motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for being here.